Something.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session, and today we're gonna do a blind against blind session. Let's get started.
Yeah, we gotta get rid of those heads. The cheats.
The cheats, huh?
Get rid of the cheat codes, man. Turbo's good.
Okay.
What about that? Yeah, the range over. Yeah, we gotta hide that. There you go. Yeah, I would. I would be raising the high-low.
You can't limp call, so this is the top of your limp fold, right? Of your raise fold.
I think it's gonna be a good fold. I think you probably, you probably don't limp call like you said. Oh, more settings.
I think. If you, it's like queen eight, right? Like a limp call.
I think you are limp folding this.
Okay, so say we limp. He raises.
Do you ever limp raise? What do you limp raise? Not really at thirty.
It's absolute eights.
Yeah, it's good.
Like, these are mixing, so. And then, so like, yeah, top of the race for. Hey, we're in the weeds. Pretty good flop.
I wanna bet big.
Big, oh, how big?
It's a good question. Um. I would probably bet six or four.
That big?
Yeah, I mean. The six of spades is pretty valuable here, and we benefit from getting folds.
I would go somewhere between like two and four.
Yeah, I think I'm four. I think I'm four and six.
Four.
We didn't choose four.
Yeah.
We gotta slow the actions down. So it goes really big. It goes eight.
Alright. How this is going? The range of the big blind is so wide. Eight seems ambitious here, no?
Gotta bring the heat, man. Super small is not a bad answer.
So it's like the fives and then over pairs a little bit. And then the blacks.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's got like, um.
Is it all spades? This here all spades?
Uh, I think you have to have a spade on the off suits if you're gonna be going kind of bananas. But look at ace king. Well, ace king's a gutty, so I guess that makes sense. It's actually the ace kings without a spade that are going kind of bonkers.
Yeah, and land. Here, it's not only picking spades.
Yeah, for the most part, though, like, the, the big beefy ones, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so really, I've answered. Okay. And then what? Mixing a lot with other stuff. Like, we're really polar when we're bad day. Top pair or over pair or, yeah. And then, oh, I just noticed something, though. Here. Ace king suited. I'm gonna bet big when you not have it, and if you bet small, you kind of have it.
Yeah, I mean, if you're betting big with ace king, you're getting value from spades, right? You're kind of targeting different regions of the range.
Oh, yeah. And then a seven?
Now you want.
Seven, yeah, doesn't get value from.
Yeah, now you want the spade.
Makes a lot of sense.
Calls. I mean. This feels like a pretty good double barrel. But we went pot, right? That's what you ended up using?
Yeah.
Now, you use four.
We're gonna change it.
Yeah.
Say we go pot.
Kind of changes things a little bit when you go pot, like, uh. I would prob, I don't know, man, I might.
I think when we go pot, he folds a size, as you know.
He should, but he's not folding threes, and he's not folding fives, and he's not folding spades. And we're kind of like in the dump for us all of that.
And he's not really folding his size.
No, no, he's not really.
He just get king eye to fold. Well, king eyes. He got king at the fold here. It's great, right?
Mm-hmm.
Ah.
Yeah, I'm kind of in no man's land. I'm torn between like.
We give up?
Jamming. I don't think it's a give up, but, um.
We pick up too much equity with this page?
Yeah, I don't know if you're just gonna let it go. And plus, like, you kind of cooler the board when a three comes.
Like, it's gonna be pretty sticky here. And he has a lot of flush cards. Is the flush card good for us or no?
So when we raise of thirty. I think we have less flushes pre-flop or less suited combos.
But we got like the strong ones, right?
Yeah, I think we have the super strong ones and the super trashy ones.
But the ace of spades and lots of sounds.
Yeah, I think it, I think the flush coming in is probably better for the big blind.
I agree.
So, um. Yeah, I don't know. I got, I'm kind of a fish here, but I'm thinking like, just jam or check it. Okay. Both seem reasonable. So like jamming is gonna just get folds from five X. And, um. Checking is kind of putting on the brakes, but checks hard to play because if you check and he jams, what do you do? Like, good. Well, he does that, so what do you do? I don't think you get a fold. But, uh, Phil's kind of a bad man.
How do you figure out if it's a good call or not?
I think first set, we have to call.
Well, so like, I, I don't know if like. There's a quick, easy MDF way of approaching this. Like, I think the rules kind of like change a little bit. Blind versus blind, but I don't know, to be honest. I'm just thinking like, you have to defend wider.
We also a pretty good price here.
And you got a really good price, yeah. Problem is, it's like, well, it's like, what do we, what do we beat is, uh.
Yeah.
We, we could just be dead in the water, but I think you probably still call. You'd even jam, like, it's, it's perfect. It's good enough to jam even.
Yeah.
Now, you probably, maybe you just put it in. Your, the flush came in?
Never.
Maybe not.
Yeah, I think check call is better.
Yeah, you buckle up here. So buckle up as well. Oh, you could put.
Oh.
You get, you get, uh, you get calls from three X, like, he's got a lot of three X, like, three, four, five, three, like, those are kind of in a tough spot. Is what I was thinking.
Uh, yeah, okay, you can get value still from where. Two pair is five, maybe?
Well, yeah, look at the, look at the range. Make it jam, and let's see what he actually has to call with. I don't think he gets to fold the three, even though the flush came in.
Dude, the solver probably calls two ten here and then.
The thing is, though. Like, he's not having so much of the. Shooting broadways in this sport, so. So.
So Bro is folding two pairs. Some two pairs. And he's, he's calling straights. Um.
Is what? A pair? No, that's just spades.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Spade. Okay. And these are all spades?
Yeah, it's pretty much just like. Oh, he is calling just aces right there, some like naked aces. That he shows up with here.
He's majority folding aces, though.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I see. I'm just saying, like, um. They're indifferent. Those aren't all flushes.
Would you fold aces if you were the big one here?
I, I, I've never played this node, like, if I'm thirty big blinds and like the small blind raises into me and I have aces, I probably raise back pre-flop.
I mean, click it, huh?
Yeah, I would probably just like click it. I, I could be here like sub twenty a lot.
It has a big frequency here. We're not.
Oh, it does. Yeah, it does. I might be misplaying it, like, you may supposed to just call.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, three X is kind of like the lion's share of why you can dog jam here.
You understand why it calls with four eights here?
Uh, those are, those are just flushes, I think.
Okay, so it's all just flushes, right? Ten six is at ten.
I think the only thing that's. Wow, what, what is going on with ten six? Oh, the rivered pair of tens is a bluff catch.
Then.
And you're blocking six. Six, three, I guess. That's wild. Yeah, I don't know about that one. I think it's just the straight, like. Now you just call.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. And he just had a three.
Well, I think people take back it with a three here.
A lot. Okay, so blind versus blind twelve. Um, I think maybe some of this like low middling connected range actually just piles sometimes. And I think. You, you don't get to fold it, but it's interesting that it doesn't have a limp range here.
And I was gonna ask the same thing. Does that mean we don't limp anything in our range at this step?
Well.
That's not right, Joey. You definitely limp at twelve. But. Um, it may just be this combo, like, do you have it? Maybe it's just isolating actions that aren't, uh. Showing up now or something. I don't know.
It won't let us live. I wanted to live. I'll be honest.
Yeah, yeah. Honestly, my two, my two options here were either limp or jam, and I'm thinking jam is gonna be good, to be honest. You get, you get better answer full if you get called. It's not the end of the world. But we should look at the range.
Yeah.
No, Joey, you are right. There is just not a limp in this range, which is kind of odd. Oh, it's because this was, this was ran with no lamps. You see up top left? So.
Oh, yeah, you gotta change that.
Yeah, we need to fix that. To the limp variance. It may just be because you selected twelve. And they don't have limp ranges for twelve.
Right, but this here doesn't, is not. It's not like in the config. Oh, like, we come up on this tree, but. I, I guess.
See, this, this is a limp range. I think the twelves just don't have lamps.
With limbs, wow.
Oh, okay, you can, can select it with. And now, like, look at, well, seven, five's still jamming, but look at that region. Like, um.
Yeah, this, this looks better.
Okay, so that's weird, cuz we. Okay. So going back here. Free flop has everything here. You can't select with or without limbs here.
Well, you see MTT CEV with lamps, like, you, you should have limp selected. I don't know. What the shenanigans are going on with that, but.
I'll figure if you're in the with limb.
Right there. Says it right there.
Okay, okay.
All right, all right.
The scam.
It is a scam. Um, also, also connected cards, I play limp. I play limp.
Yeah, along the pair axis, you're really gonna wanna limp.
I agree, Pete. Uh. All right, I'm pretty notorious, just betting out one big blind here a lot. Um.
Check.
Checking's probably like more theoretically sound because it's the worst pair, but.
If you had the five of spades, I would probably be more inclined to that.
Mm-hmm. But you don't get to fold. You get a call.
Absolutely.
Can you raise with a spade?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know. I would doubt. Doubt it just because you have the pair. Uh, more, more so, more so.
With the high spade, the fine.
Yeah, more so. Yeah.
Yeah. You raise because you have more ability to barrel a turn with, when you have the spade than when you don't have the spade.
I guess when I have to kind of.
Yeah.
I call again. What?
Mm, what? Yeah, I wasn't gonna fold there.
I mean, yeah.
All them, all this time.
Yeah, I was, uh, I was actually calling there too. Pretty surprised that it picked the, uh, fold, but.
Yeah, I thought when the queen paired, we had to call the four.
Hey. So I was saying, that's why I was saying, man, we're a bunch of blind versus blind fishes.
We, we probably defend against a small bet. But when he polarizes. Yeah, even his stuff that's bluffing, it has good equity against our hand, cuz our hand is so weak.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, I.
I think you just don't beat anything, man, like. If he's barreling a four, you lose to all the other fours, pretty much. Like, ten-four is the one where it starts. Calling.
Yeah, like, take a look at his, at his strategy here and see what he's doing this size with.
I would be pretty surprised, like, if he has a pair, I bet all of his pairs that barrel the flop are gonna start barreling the turn here. And then, like, hands that have equity, maybe, like, the draws will kind of slow down. Cuz they don't wanna get pushed off.
Yeah, like, he, he actually stops betting fours and sixes here a bunch.
Yeah, six, four has put the brakes on, five, four put the brakes on. Seven, five is still going, eight, five is still going, six, five is still going. Five, three. Your queens, obviously. Like, hands like jack three are still going. Yeah, this doesn't look too crazy.
He uses very heavy on queen and six eight.
Yeah.
Then these bluffs are like spades, so even the bluffs have equity.
Mm-hmm.
See, pre-flop there, if you, if you limp. And the big blind raises, you call in a min raise. Nothing else.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Are you? No, you, you call the flop. He, he bets the flop.
No, I'm talking pre-flop. If you, if you limp. And he min, min raises that, that, they'll call.
I understand what you're saying now. I didn't understand what you were saying.
It's folding pre-flop. I wasn't sure.
Yeah. Yeah, you have better stuff to defend.
So ten deuce, um. Are we ever raising ten deuce?
If you don't have limbs in your strategy.
Oh, this is a non-limp range. Dude, why, why, why do we have these non-lippers in there? All right, so, yeah, you, you hit any, that's it, right there. So. Hit, you hit any, now hit with lamps. There we go. That's. So it decided that it was gonna mix. The non-limpy ranges and the limpy ranges. This is. This is interesting. Um, I actually think, all right, let's think about this for a second. Jamming doesn't sound the craziest thing. But I think if we're gonna have like a two X raise range, this is probably gonna be in it. It probably wants to stick more blocker oriented at twelve if you're going to jam. No, it does jam. Where does it pull the two X from? More so.
Probably slightly worse equity.
Doesn't do a ton of it at twelve, so that's probably more of a nuanced thing that comes in a little bit more at fifteen, maybe.
Well, this is a spot where if you put it with limbs, without limbs, it's. Basically turning the limbs into min raise, right?
Yeah, but we have lamps in our game, so we don't need that. It's a useless range, pretty much. But like, if you go up to fifteen, like, I, I kind of wanna see the ranges where they start becoming competitive.
Fourteen?
Uh, okay, yeah, fourteen's good. Fourteen, seventeen, you see where the regions are coming in. That queen six is actually pretty much, pretty much in there.
Well, he has cut off. Right now, cutoff was active.
Oh, yeah, why do you have cutoff active?
No, no.
Oh, no, you don't have cutoff. You don't have cutoff active.
Oh, okay. His cursor was just over.
So like, the reason I'm kind of concerned with this is like, when we get into later stages of the tournament, you're often like. Fifteen, twelve big blinds, and. You do wanna have some jams, but I think you also wanna have some of these like two point two, two point three. Clicky sizes, cuz people don't know what to do versus that. They make mistakes.
Oh. So you think? We should have more min raise from this deck?
Well, that's the question I'm proposing. I honestly, like, I don't know if you have an ICM adjusted one for twelve. Just out of curiosity, you, you probably don't. You might. I don't know, actually. I haven't looked recently. Cuz this is what I'm out there doing. Right now. You got it three-handed.
Fifteen?
Fifteen or less even. Like, there's a twelve into a twenty-two. That's gonna be jammy, though. Thirteen into a twenty-one.
There's a nine eleven. Uh, four or five up from you there in the blinds.
I feel like anything under ten's just gonna be jammy. I don't know if you're gonna get a min clicky below ten. Take a peek at that thirteen, twenty-one real quick.
Sure.
And what, what is this? This is final table adjusted.
Yeah.
Uh, try like, yeah, fifty percent. Let's see if. There's a fourteen, fifteen. That's a good one. A twelve, eighteen, that's a good one. Okay, so like, what is our small blind? Okay, this is what I was talking about. So like, while queen six still does a lot of jamming, the strategy has kind of shifted a little bit twelve effective. So this region, we are doing like a lot of this two X raising. Okay, I just kind of wanted to fact-check my thought process there a little bit. So like, jamming's a reasonable option. For sure.
So at this small, uh, stack depths, we do more, um, min raising with ICM?
Yes. Yeah, that was kind of the synopsis.
Okay.
They don't have post-flop ICM, so like, I don't know if you're gonna be able to take it, if you're gonna be able to look at this stuff.
Yeah. Guess you're right.
So we lamp. Which is fine. This is definitely a one big blind or two big blind spot.
High speed?
So. Oh, don't you want to check your top two unpaired hands? So that you wanna check your aces and queens here a lot?
I will give you my logic. My logic is facing a limp, he's not checking back a ton of king X. And we have three straight, three flush. With a high card. It is true. What you're saying, that our high card is going to just be good on a lot of flops. But we also are out of position, and we are also are very shallow, so we will often have equity realization issues, is my thought. So I would lean. This feels like a better flop for a, a limper. Than a check versus a limper. Follow me? So that's, that's why I would bet one.
The, the thing is, he's not having any king, and he's not having any ace.
Yeah, well, that, that, that's kind of my logic too. He does have some ace that he checks here. Or does he? I don't know if he does it. I don't know if he does it twelve, but. Um, obviously, checking's a reasonable answer in a balanced strategy.
Hmm.
Hmm, so my, my concern is, like, I have just tons and tons of stuff that are way worse than this that I wanted that.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think the queen's just got a lot of, I think this has got a lot of clean double barrels. Like, you could bet one here, he calls, and then like. It, it, it's pretty intuitive, like, where you keep going on the turn, but I, I hear you. I, I. I definitely follow the logic, and it makes sense to play check here. Like this. If you bet one, now you can bet. I feel like facing a check, you're probably supposed to bet like three here now.
Yeah, like, you picked up equity, you're committing to.
So it's.
Barrel off here.
Right, so it's, it's check again, since we've kind of committed to this idea of showing down our high card. Or, or you're.
Thing is, I think we have a draw that struggle against the raise, but we can kind of call one bet. Can we call one bet here if we check?
Uh, you do call and bet. I wouldn't be surprised to see you actually just check, check jam. Honestly, I bet you would check. Like, if he bet small on the turn, you probably check jam, and if you bet five and he raises, you call.
So you go sixty-six percent, and then. Now, do you call, really?
I don't think you call. I think you might just fold or jam.
Wanna jam?
Mm-hmm.
So. Like, he's gonna be very resilient with his value portion here, like. I, I don't know that you're gonna. Fold a lot when you jam.
Yeah, so like, hands that I would be imagining he could be doing this with is like an eight, a ten. You probably get folds from like naked ten X that he's got. That's in his like check back range. I, I don't know how many queen X he's playing check, check on the flop with, and we're blocking queen X. So is he opening a betting dialogue with a nine? Like, this is basically a jack or marginal equity. A lot. And you're right. If it is a jack, we are getting called if we jam, but. A ten and a queen are going to be good. So, I don't know. May not be right, but that's, I think, what I would do here.
He's gonna have some kings in his check back range.
On the flop? You think kings are going check, check?
No, not all the kings. But he's gonna. If he's gonna have a checking range, he's gonna have to keep something strong. In his range to check, too.
Yeah, I would think like nine X maybe sometimes. You could fact-check it. We could look at that, see what he's playing check, check with.
I mean, uh, it's not a big portion of like the top pair. Strategy, but.
I'm folder jam. I'm fold, I'm folded.
Man, anyone else? Anyone just calling?
I call.
No, I, I don't think you can call.
Yeah, I think we get here with better stuff. I think I'm gonna fold.
Yeah, you know, calling actually might not be crazy because you're so shallow, like, you can just play donk jam sometimes.
That's what I, exactly what I was gonna say. I would call and then done jam some, some river.
Yeah, and you're gonna, it's gonna have that in the range, but it's just fold. Look at the EVs. So, second EV for calling is the worst. Follow, no, it's not the worst. Jamming is the worst. Okay, never mind. Folding is the answer, but let, let's, let's fact-check some of those claims that we were kind of, or those assumptions that we were making. So first assumption was, he doesn't have any ace X in his pre-flop range when he plays check back. Or true. King X even, yeah, we could say, I would think he might have, he has like fragments of king X, but. What is he doing versus a?
There are some there, not, I'm not saying.
Majority, overall, we're kind of right. Not, well, not many.
Well, so is this, make it proportional, just, or this is proportional, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, yeah, I mean, he's got some king X, um. And he's got a little ace X. I feel like in reality, the ace X is probably even more gimped than this. But the kings seem reasonable, right?
The, the big thing is, is you gotta, he's got all the nine X.
Yeah, no, yeah, he's got nine X for sure.
And the nine X is gonna be pretty resilient here, this stack.
All right, so hypothesis number two is on the flop. When he faces a check, is he checking back king X ever in position? I don't think you.
We bet one. On that hand.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, we went, we bet.
Oh, okay.
Well, with a bet, it was a low frequency thing. But we went with it.
Okay, well, what does he have? Does he have kings that he just plays call?
That's what we looked at, and then. Like.
There's a lot of calling.
Dry on eight, on his best faces, best games, but if you look at this here, he has.
I'm actually surprised that. I was envisioning the other way around. It's a lot of racing with those slivers of calls. I'm surprised it's not reversed.
It's fish off the line, like, you don't wanna scare the fish off here.
I think Peter's right. I think you are just so shallow that there's not a reality that you're folding a king at this point, so. You gotta just let him kind of barrel off. With this portion, portion of the range. All right, interesting hand. Um, I would just try to show it down.
Yeah, we've showed down equity with the six.
Now that we've made it here. Do you ever block? Okay, there it is. It does blocks.
I thought it was, I thought it was too low down in the tree to block that.
Yeah, the rules and heuristics that you kind of memorized about how you handle things are different blind versus blind. So if like, you think like, you're only block betting with second pair. That's like true if you're facing the cutoff, but blind versus blind, it's. The rules are different. You gotta fold, I think. Well, what do you fold? I don't know, man. You're blocking a straight.
Let's talk about the properties. Spade is bad.
Spade's not great. I don't know. Spade's not great, I don't know if it's super impactful.
Queen is pretty good here, I think.
Uh, yeah, I think it is.
But you really have spades, so I think it's just a fold.
Yeah, maybe.
Do you call without a spade? That's the real question.
Man, I don't. This guy is like representing.
Queen of clubs or, queen of clubs, you call.
I'd struggle here because I don't know how, why this guy's jamming for value. Is this guy taking three six? Here, is he taking Jack three here?
Like, yeah, river raises are very value heavy, like, this is just Jack behind me all day.
Yeah, in population, in population is, is an easy fold. I'm not.
I think, I think it's the other way around, actually, Joey, I think. I think you're completely backwards, because, and I think you're backwards because. I don't think people are jamming wide enough for value, so that means that this is gonna be Queen ten more in your games. And you're blocking Queen ten, which makes this hand a better bluff catcher. If. The solver's jamming three six here for value, your queen blocker becomes less relevant.
Well, a lot of my games are live. Um, I'm telling you, if I block that the river, I'm not getting raised unless it's value.
Yeah.
I mean, there are, there but not.
Do you understand what I'm saying, though? It's the same, it's the same thing.
So Queen of clubs six, what do we do?
I don't know, man, like, I can see, like, there's, I think you're right, I think if you have the club, you're supposed to call.
Are you?
It's gonna be closer, I would think, right? Yeah, it is closer. Alright, so last piece of information here is, look at the big blind range and how wide is he jamming over a block? Eighteen percent of range, right? So river's pair, river set of sixes make a lot of sense, three six makes some sense, nine six makes some sense, all these like river two pairs. And this is kind of what I was trying to like explain, Joey, it's like, in your games, your live games. If a guy makes three six here on the river, he's not gonna raise all in typically. Right? Because like, they're just not going wide enough for value, but they will play, they will play Queen ten trappy here. So like, your queen blocker becomes way less relevant, like, when they're, when they're going crazy for value.
Oh. Yeah, you can see there's, like, they're going for value with all the two pairs, and even with. The kings and the, the nines with a straight blocker that they have, they're going for value as well.
Right, so like, I'm gonna throw an assumption out here that we can, we, I mean, we, it would be a lot of work to test it, but. If we lock this range, just for raising Queen ten, I bet Queen ten, Queen six bluff catching goes to full frequency. Becomes way more valuable of a bluff catcher. If they're not finding some of these other ones, right, like.
Okay, yeah, I, I can agree with that logic.
The Jack threes of the world.
Yeah, he doesn't even have Queen ten in range here.
Which is kind of funny, right? So.
Yeah, like, like, it's, it's all about two pair here.
Yeah, you're right, Peter, I did, I'm here on this like rant and the cans are not even in range.
To be honest.
Yeah, tell me more.
I could see Queen ten getting here in the live game.
Yeah, I, I could too, I could, I could too, I just think it's funny that here in the solver, it wasn't. Alright, so this is a region that's gonna benefit from like jamming a lot at twelve. I think even if you like ICM adjustments, it's still gonna jam a, a good bit.
You know, whenever I do that and I'm against like. You know, the big blind. And then he calls you with the hand, he's not supposed to call here, well.
He finds the call with a King eight suited.
So, I, I just wanna show out there for the big blinds of this world, okay? When you jam a King six. This is your calling range.
King seven, better.
Alright, you're not supposed to show us nine seven suited to offer.
Yeah, you, you jerks, you know, you know who you are, you know who you are.
That's not.
Yeah, but if they do show us hands like that, aren't we happy that?
We are not happy, Joey. Not happy at all.
You're statistically happy over the long run, Joey, but in that moment and time, you were definitely not happy. Hey, see, that's whatever, but.
If you told Louis that you might call with nine seven, he might not ju, he might not jam King six.
Alright, so don't, don't jam this, don't jam this, the question is. Yeah, well, I want a limp or men raise, I'm just trying to work through like what the range looks like.
I don't think you ever limp here.
I think H King suited might limp.
Limping is all of the question.
Is it? Well, then, then, then hit the two big blind button.
Cause if you were thirty, I think it would be the optimal, but at this depth, I think it's another thing.
I, actually, I, I wanna raise it at thirty.
This is the top of the jamming range, your off suits, this, you're so, you're so wide jamming, you're protected here, so you still get to jam this.
But limping is a thing with this hand.
So. So you'd have to kind of, um. It is a thing with this handsome, but, so just like to hu, just to humor me, will you try to find something ICM adjusted similar?
Well, hang on, my point is, like, at fourteen, the deeper we are, the more of a thing it is, it is, it's seventeen. Twenty. You know, thirty. Twenty-five, you know, so for me, it's like a deeper stack thing, kind of thing, and then thirty are just too deep to do it.
Okay.
But in general, that's the idea, and then two short just rhythm.
And then, so, you should look at the ICM adjusted one, cause I think it's important, like fifty or something like that.
Fifty percent, sign symmetric, and then what kind of depth did we have, the short one?
We want it, we want it shorty, yeah, we want it shorty.
That's a small F they have for fifty percent.
Do you have a asymmetrical one that we can kind of play with, maybe, that'll let us get a little, little shallower? There's a twelve sixteen, that's kind of interesting, there's a twelve eighteen.
This one is a shallower.
There was a fourteen fifteen about two above.
Oh, a fourteen fifteen would be nice.
This one is.
Oh, there is a fourteen fifteen, yeah, let's see what this does. Okay, so, becoming more and more and more of a thing with the top of this range. When it's like fourteen fifteen, so like. I feel like there's kind of like a bell curve that happens, like, when you dip like somewhere between thirteen and twelve big blinds, you just start jamming it and below. But like, between fourteen and seventeen and eighteen, like, ICM adjusted, it does some of this stuff sometimes.
Yeah, if you look here, seventeen. But the shorter you get, the less of a thing it becomes, the deeper you are, the more of a thing.
Yeah, well, past the point, like, there's some teenage years in there that, um. There's kind of like a, an inflection point with it.
Yeah.
Six deuce off, so I think this is probably like in the fold range, but I do, I limp with this.
I fold this.
I'm limping too, I need to, and then you bet one big blind on the flop.
Yes, yes, exactly.
And then you get away with stuff that.
You shouldn't. You shouldn't, but you do. Uh, alright, so ten four, I think, is just strong enough to limp in theory. Alright.
And it's gone, what about, what's the worst ten you call here?
Worst ten that you call?
This is it.
I think this would be the floor.
Dude, you guys are calling a limp jam with this, or a limp raise?
I thought you meant, what's the worst ten you limp with, Pre?
No, 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 look at the action.
I would call the raise.
Well, you said here, here is ambiguous, be more specific.
I'm between ten eight.
How about, how about you show up on time, Danny, and quit a, quit throwing accusations over here?
Some of us have day jobs, alright?
Yeah, I'm thinking ten eight, maybe ten seven.
I, I would be calling.
I don't know if you called this big of a raise with ten eight.
Yeah, 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 so thi, this GTO wizard's unique, it has a three X raise and a four point five X raise. So I think you're gonna have to fold tighter than ten eight.
It's ten nine or nothing, I think. All, all the off suit tens are gone.
I would call ten nine, maybe.
Either, you don't fold ace ten here or King ten.
Ten eight's calling, ten seven's calling. Oh, my goodness.
You're, well, you're not here with ten eight off suit, cause, or ace, uh, ace ten off suit, cause you've jammed that, or you've raised that. Um, yeah, I'm holding ten seven, ten eight, and ten nine here.
So give it, give it its fancy two point five X raise, and let's see how that affects our tens.
Ah, it's like two rolls, two pips more.
Right, and you actually have, you have bluffs in this range now, like, look at, look at Queen three, Queen deuce, King deuce. Queen deuce suited.
I'm not calling a four point five X with ten eight. If I CM is at all present.
Yeah, I would agree, I would agree. Um, so I think you're gonna have some limp jammy stuff within this region. I think maybe, I think King four might be too good to play limp, or too good to play limp jam, I think you just jam this, to be honest.
You jam all the ace, all the kings, some queens, right? Do you jam Queen six here? That's the real question.
Hmm, probably, if it's not ICM adjusted, otherwise I'd like men raise or something.
Oh, Queen nine is good enough to jam.
Yeah. We got, we scammed him. Uh, so, this is gonna mix pretty heavily, I think, maybe some three five, some calls.
I would limp here.
Alright, it's not as heavy as I thought. You do call this, though. Nope, okay, I'm a fish.
Nine six or nine seven is raising more. Yeah, not nice, nine six.
Even, even nine seven, nine, nine eight seven, nine seven, eight seven, or even kind of like eh. It's like you said, Louis, it's the offsuit sevens are kind of the floor versus this range at thirty.
Offsuit eight is almost always.
Yeah.
The bar, the floor of the limp call.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost always good.
We got ten deuce.
So like, mixing.
Okay, this seems, well, is it?
Eight four.
Is it? What are we doing here at eight, with eight four?
You limp?
Yeah, I guess you do limp, I don't think you.
I think the machine wants to fold, though.
You think? I don't know, I think the machine's gonna limp, it's, it's too good. No, it does, it does, it does fold.
I would limp it. I would fold the six deuce, but I would limp this one.
Yeah, this one, this one feels way too good. To just like, put in the trash can.
Eight four off, huh?
Alright, so, twelve, the suited ones are gonna hold up just fine versus jam, I think you do limping with this region at twelve, yeah.
You gotta have some aces in your limping range, right?
Your suited wheels protect the, the, the stacked up.
So suited aces, what's the kind of best one you jam?
I think it draws the line somewhere between like six and eight.
Six and eight?
Somewhere in there, they just, they don't limp anymore and they just start jamming or raising.
Six, you don't flat very much, just two wheels and two good ones.
Uh, this is actually a little different than I had envisioned in my mind, I didn't think that we were gonna be in there with the ace queen suited, but. Um, it makes sense from what we were looking at earlier, right?
You are protect your limping range, and aces is not gonna be enough.
Seems like a good two big blind spot or one.
Yeah, but we limp, so I guess we check and then.
Why would you check?
Because we limp.
It's a limp check, it's a limp checker, though.
It's three.
I would.
This is.
It's S P R three.
Yeah, see, again, it, it, those are heuristics that make a lot of sense, like playing versus the field, I think the calculus is a bit different blind versus blind.
Okay.
I would bet every other spade combo that doesn't contain an ace, right, like.
That's one.
That's one or two.
Or checks, checks fine. Uh, okay. I guess you're kind of preserving the equity, you don't wanna get like piled on if you double barrel.
Yeah.
I would.
Yeah, like, we're just gonna check ace eye and King eye a lot here, try and show down.
Yeah, maybe so, I would have double barrels in game, I don't know. Jam?
Just fall.
Maybe.
And just.
Yeah, we keep, when you jam, he only is left with value and you take out all his buffs.
Well, he's got eight nine with a spade, spades.
He's still here with eight nine with a spade, right? Probably gonna wanna call.
Feels kind of bad, man, but I don't think you get to fold a side. You do fold a side.
Pretty close.
We got spade. Spade is not a great call here at all.
No, it's not. Ten eight.
Yeah.
Five, five deuce, this is like one of the folds that I limp.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Mataflex says that, right, limp hundred percent and then.
Yeah, you just, a lot of people say that.
And then we add our little part, which is that one on the flop every time.
Uh, at seven, at seventeen, what are we doing here? So like, I don't, I don't know if you jam seventeen.
Well, it's bad enough to jam, right?
Alright, so construct the jamming range real quick, I think it's gonna be. What about the, you think it's gonna prefer suited combos or offsuit combos at seventeen?
I jams every offsuit one, every one of them.
Okay.
Question is, how do we play the suited one?
I mean.
I think you jam, uh, every offsuit king's here as well, no?
Ugh.
I mean, realistically, with this hand, it looks like you probably do anything and still be.
Alright, so.
Or out of the ballpark.
Alright, so what I'm thinking about is how do I balance my limp jamming range here, okay? And if you are over jamming on the flop here, or if you're over jamming, opening the pot. What are you playing limp jams with?
This.
This, that, that, see, that's kind of, that's the question I'm asking, Nick. Uh, I don't know if we're playing limp jam with the suited ones or the offsuit ones.
No, the off suits are pure jams.
I think you're right, I think you're right.
At, as you get deeper and deeper, like moving from twelve to seventeen, you're gonna start, um, having more limbs with the top end of the range. So like, at twelve, you're gonna have like ace ten limping here, and ace jack limping here. And now it's gonna limp like ace nine and ace eight, and so it's still gonna be jamming from this part.
I think it's gonna be more polar too, I think like, I think you still might have like some ace deuce, some king deuce offsuit in a limp jam range here. Kind of stuff.
Do you limp trap any offsuit ace, ace queen, ace king?
Uh, the best, some of the best, okay, so it ha, it has flipped here.
J K, yeah.
It's gonna pull from the, okay, so, I mean, this is.
The bad ones, right, eight six, eight seven.
Yeah, this is kind of what we, this is the pattern we've been seeing, there's like that polarizing division in the center where like the eight, the seven, the six. Kind of wanna play raise while like some of the better ones wanna play. So I guess, alright, what are you doing with ace, king, and ace jack here? Are you playing limp call? No, you probably just play limp jam, right?
Limp jam, limp jam all of them, right?
I, I think.
Alright, let's see. Then.
You, you gotta have some aces post flop is the problem. Alright, so it is taking like the, the off, those offsuit kings, I was. Alright, so it is taking like the, the off, those offsuit kings I was talking about, and it's.
Not picking a six and a seven.
Yeah, so it is kinda protecting the call range with some of these suited ones, which makes some sense. Cause the problem is if you, if you take it post flop and you're playing like. Get in with all of your ace X, when you're just gonna get run over on some flop textures.
Yeah.
But also like.
You're gonna have something in there.
When they limp call the raise, they never have an ace. Listen to, also from this side.
Yeah.
Instead of never having an ace, you just almost never have an ace.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. There's gotta be that, that little bit of doubt.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Some singles.
And if we raise, we raise, call it off surely with the sand, right?
Uh, yeah, I don't think you get to fold an A, a suited ace. I think that's why you're.
Why bet this hand back?
Um, so this is a, this is a, did we raise pre-flop?
Hmm.
Oh, we did, we two point five did.
Yeah, so this is just a C bet, like it's a hard board texture to kind of continue with for him. There's a king out there, which is like asymmetrically good for a razor as opposed to a caller. I see like a lot of merit. I mean, it's, it's the same thing like C betting in position, right?
Also, it's like kinda mergey where, what are our bluffs here? Like besides spades, we don't have good bluffs, so you pull from over cards. So if he does have a king, we have good equity still.
Yeah, seems reasonable.
Okay, and then the flops and then. Why did they put that other thing?
Um, is it, what are you looking for?
Table.
Okay.
Well, twenty eight percent checking.
Yeah, not a lot, right?
So we bet very heavy, right? Small. That's fifty percent of the time small and then we size up.
If you wanna play like heuristic, the heuristic game, you could probably almost simplify this to a range bet, like for your, for your memory.
Oh, they added the equities here, look at this.
How cute.
So I bet one. Their board.
Uh, do you keep going?
No, you'd rather, well.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I think Ace five's a showdown now.
Alright, so.
We'd rather bluff Jack ten.
Maybe, are you gonna get to showdown Joey is the question?
If we check and he bets, I think we have to call if it's not. A huge bet. I don't know if we can get to call two though.
Yeah, well.
Doesn't feel like that for me, let's see.
It looks, it sounds like a good plan. Let's see.
What's that check?
Don't blast us, please. Alright.
You don't get the folds, you don't get the folds.
You sure?
Yeah, he's got space that he could have continued with on the flop. He's got like four, five.
Oh yeah.
Do you block?
Why would you block with your ace eye?
Now, here's the question, dude.
Well, alright, so like before you go too far, just think about like what the range, equity kinda shifts on that river. Not really though, it's a game of full houses. So if maybe there wasn't like three, three, three out there.
Think he might have a three out sometimes as well.
Alright, sorry, we can kinda move on from that thought now.
I would fold.
It mixes.
Yeah.
I knew, I knew it was an easy one call. I wasn't sure about calling twice.
Alright, twenty big blinds, we can three X this.
Queen six. Yeah, okay. The top.
Yeah.
Of the raise fold.
Can you even jam some, but. I think this is superior. Monotone connected somewhat. You have a very valuable six of spades. I like a small bet.
One?
I would bet two, I think, in game, but one's not crazy. It actually just, it actually just goes bananas.
Pretty big, right? For a monotone barn, swear.
Yeah.
Again, the heuristics that we know from the field don't apply blind versus blind.
I was thinking if it weren't mono, it would be a good big bet board.
Yeah, maybe, right? Yeah, you know, it would be. It would be. Uh, this is a limp jam, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, it makes sense.
This is probably a really good limp jam. Boom.
Oh.
It also jammed a little.
I think you ran out of the straight though, right?
A little bit. Rights.
And call.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Anything but limping here. Uh.
We gotta see a flop suited cards, I think.
Do we?
I don't know, maybe we don't.
Fortunately, we, oh, we do get to fold, okay.
I've suit, a suited deuce, suited three, we fold, no?
Yeah.
I've been folding some of these feeling like I'm a nit, but. It's just good. Alright, alright, that's why we re- alright, we raise the floor and then below that we limp fold. Alright, that makes sense.
Uh, what do we do with Jack deuce? I feel like having a Jack is. Hmm, this is gonna be like right along the edge. Uh, I think this is like too bad to raise. So maybe it lamps, cause it feels too good to fold.
I think it's another limp fold or.
Limp fold?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very close. Sometimes I'll just open fold in game if I know my guy's just raising me every time over there.
Well, you're, you're an exploitable nit, Danny.
Uh, no, cause then I'll get him with other parts of my range. If you knew he was gonna three X you, there's no sense in limping.
Yeah, sure. If you know he's gonna three X, just jam it on him when he, when he raises.
If you know in your heart.
Not with Jack deuce, they have a hand sometimes.
Nit.
You're crazy, you know it. You're, you're on some shit right now.
Alright, so if you find an old interview, there's an interview with a guy who's been pretty good at poker for a long time called Chris Oliver, plays on GG still. Chris Oliver. He had an interview a while back about some of his poker theory and he had this concept of raising to four bet. He raised cards without even looking at them with the intention of four betting because he was sending a message to the guy that he knew was gonna three bet him. Which kind of applies to what you're talking about, blind versus blind. So. Crazy guy sporting the Brazilian flag, you know he's gonna, you know he's gonna raise you, just four bet him.
I will bet here.
When I bust with Jack deuce, I'm blaming you though.
I'll give you your buyback.
Expect a screenshot on Sunday.
Alright, so not a bet. I thought we would bet spades.
I, uh, I would have bet here too. I would have bet here too.
Interaction with the straight seems like a decent bet. We bet a lot there or is this because range missing, misses a lot and then.
It's a limp, it's a limp checker, right?
Yeah.
But you're twenty five.
Yeah.
Man, this is kinda weird. Um, limp checking at twenty five, you just don't really bet a lot here.
Yeah, we're two, I gotta protect the wide range.
Yeah, so when we limp, we lose a lot of our threes and twos and our opponent gets his threes and twos here. So he actually has the range advantage against us.
On this type of board?
Yeah, I mean, that kinda makes sense, right Pete? Like.
Yeah, he has every three and two.
Yeah, we're not limping threes and deuces, but he.
He raises quite a bit of the offsuit.
Yeah, he should be raising a lot of them, right?
If he's good, well, the solver's good, but.
Right.
Uh, maybe we can check raise.
In reality, they'll have more than.
I don't hate this, Louis. I kinda like check raising.
Let's check raise. Have a overcard. Straight connectivity, you can barrel on a spade.
You got a little wiggle room too.
Seven is the main size, look at that.
Can raise big.
Yeah, you're not messing around.
I think it's five, no.
Yeah, like, are you gonna get all the chips?
I think it's seven.
See, man, this is what I'm talking about. Like, I don't have this in my game.
Uh oh.
You just put, you just, you just jam now.
No, 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 no.
I don't know on the flush completer, it might be six point eight.
Bro, you got a Jack. Well, maybe you do, maybe you, actually, maybe you do bet small. I think I would have jammed, but I don't know.
Yeah, but you're too aggressive here if you jam.
Maybe, you might be right.
Like, when the flush complete in general, in my mind, it's a bet small.
Alright, so before you click the button, you're applying those field heuristics to blind versus blind again.
Yeah, but it's just like, yeah, what else are you gonna do? Jam?
Jam.
Jamming feels the best.
Yeah, I'm.
Jamming feels better to me.
I don't know, man.
Feels the best.
I just wanna go all good. I would bet small.
It's not three point four, I think, cause, yeah, yeah, yeah. We can't bet three point four. I mean, we're calling it off and it feels horrible. I'd rather, I wanna bet bigger. I wanna just bet it all, right?
We set up an SPR to shove on the turn.
And we got.
Yeah, we check raised to seven on the flop. You wanna bet three on the turn?
So like, so honestly, the check, I know what Louis' thinking makes some sense, like when you play big blind versus like hijack. And you play check raise and you get like an asymmetrical card for your range at some SPRs, betting small is what it does.
Definitely, yeah.
Um.
Completor, even at SPR one, you won't always jam.
Peter's right as well. We raise seven, seven big blind, seven X.
Yeah, like we're doing that with.
You gotta be consistent with your turn sizing, kinda.
Yeah, we're doing that with our most vulnerable hands, like ace seven and pocket eights, so like. There's still the nuts on that board.
Don't click. Alright, so now with Pete's done talking, we can talk about the hand before you go click mode. Alright. So twenty big blinds, what do you think we're doing with our aces? I'll give you a hint, we're gonna be jamming some of them.
This one?
Alright, so how are you com- composing your jamming range at twenty?
I wouldn't open a six, a seven, a six.
The suited ones, right? I think that makes some sense.
Offsuit, but the wheels I'm jamming like not ace deuce, but ace three is four and five.
I think you're jamming most of your. Offsuit ones, you're probably playing limp jam with your suited wheels and maybe some ace deuce. Ace deuce, uh, ace deuce off, ace three off.
I think six, a seven, a safe are actually doing that thing you're saying, limp jam.
Which ones? The offsuit or the suited ones?
Suited six, seven, eight.
I think they play limp, I think they, uh, those are the ones that we're taking at post flop.
Can I say I think ace three off is a limp jam and I think, I think the ace six, seven, eight off are open jam.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, Danny. I think ace deuce off.
It could be.
I think you're really, really polar offsuit ace X are gonna play limp jam. And I think like your typical ace X off, like your, your middling ones are gonna play jam.
I think ma- majority aces are jamming them.
Alright, so let's see. I would play limp jam here some of it.
Oh, it's just pure jam still.
Okay. Alright, so yeah, the composition, I had the composition a little wrong at twenty. It's just jamming the, the bad ones. The offsuit ones, and I guess your ace five, ace three, ace deuce. Suited. Those are playing limp jam, I would guess. And they're protected by like your big offsuit ace X. Not really. You don't really jam those. You jam the big offsuit ace X and you, you have the one suited combo.
Hey, we live a lot of these strong, cause we're deep enough.
Yeah.
We're in that thing.
Um, what did the off, what did the king deuce off and the king three off do before you go?
Uh, they live.
Cause we're. I know, I know they limp. I just, I'm curious if they limp jam.
Some of them did, but like it's not king deuce, it's the slightly better ones.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's, it's that part of it. This is the limp jam.
Yes, this, this, I, I don't know if you've noticed over the last month, but these, these offsuit trashy kings were drilled into my head as good bluffs. So.
Yeah.
I'm over tuned to them right now. We got scammed. Feels like a good limp call. Versus three X.
Hmm, yeah.
The, uh, not versus that.
Change my mind.
Yeah, I changed my mind too.
The shorter stacked we get, the more wary I am about studying these ranges because like they're chippy V and. The amount of time you play thirteen big blind chippy V is unless you're like grinding speed racers, it's kinda not a thing.
I'll give you a hint, Danny. You can just start replacing a lot of the jams with two X, three X opens. And you, and you won't be like terribly wrong, while keeping the really good blocker polar components jamming. And that will be like. Not a hundred percent perfect, but it'll help.
Cause I think some of the mistakes we're making in these ranges is like probably more correct than an ICM range.
Yeah, I, I talked about that briefly before you actually, you actually got here. Um, with some of the, the portions of the range, like the queen sixes prefer to jam in the chippy V ones. But they prefer like non alone raising otherwise in the adjusted ones.
I would go four point five here.
I don't know how we got here.
Raise call, check, check. Oh, sorry, limp, limp call, yes.
Never taking a Jack, never taking a ten, never taking much spades. Probably not taking a lot of hearts, we block.
Do you ever, okay, so.
We have the upper dangler to the Jack.
I'm gonna throw some crazy terms out there, but are you ever just, just jamming here maybe?
No, I was thinking that too.
No.
Seems crazy, seems crazy.
I think you can.
You gotta go polar. I just don't know how polar.
Four point five here.
Your Jack X.
It's a working bath on a blind or blind with nine spot.
Okay, so what are you doing with like Jack five of clubs here?
The same, four point five. I wanna get a call every now and then, well.
There, see, there's.
Seems good too.
Yeah, it's just there's two flush draws and there's a bunch of straight draws, so.
That's why I size up, no?
Yeah, I agree. I just don't know.
All that there's, there. We're not trying to get spades or hearts to fold, right? We're not trying to, we're just trying to get a better queen nine to fold or a king eye or an ace eye.
Maybe.
He, one big shot.
It's sevens to fold.
I feel like four point, I, I feel, I feel like you're going the right direction. I just don't feel like you're, I feel like you're one foot in, one foot out, like six is like the minimum here, I think. And six feels.
Sorry, I fini- finish your thought.
I was, I was just gonna say, if we do six, why not do the whole thing, but, um.
Okay.
No, it goes smaller.
It wants to check our bet.
Huh.
So is, there's a main straight, there's a main straight also. If you remove the main straight, I wonder if it goes just bananas.
Yeah.
Like if it's the six of hearts, if that changes it at all.
So I think part of it, like, you wanna, you wanna price the flush draw out, but keep the couple draws in. And I think that's what the three sizing does.
Yeah, maybe.
Right? Which is what you would want with a Jack, right? You, you want action. And it's a paired board, like you're just not gonna have a lot of big bets.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the other part.
All the cookies.
Yeah.
Open jam.
Ten four. Uh, alright, so at thirty, thirty-five, we're starting to raise some of this stuff, I think.
I, I would. I think it's just a limp.
I would limp, but.
Raise thirty percent.
Yeah, as you get a little bit deeper, some of the stuff, stuff starts to raise a little bit more.
Okay.
I've been finding a lot more of these the past few days since we did that one BVB study.
Yeah, they're good.
Working out pretty well. Yeah.
They're not, they're not really a thing when you go sub twenty. I'm sure you.
I've been getting more folds than I would expect and then I'm like still kinda just winning pots post flop anyway, if they call.
Uh. I would go two, but you, well, do you go two? No, it's just one or check.
Yeah, like check.
I thought you raised.
Check.
I thought you raised pre-flop. So.
Now we go four and a half. Now we go four and a half.
Yeah, I like that.
Uh, I like that, I think.
Alright.
Yeah, it seems good.
I'm just curious, like, if we're gonna have to be a little more behaved because there's.
Three?
Cuz there's, there's a three liner.
We don't have a diamond, so I wanna go bigger. We had a diamond, I could go in three.
Oh, we do check again a lot.
What?
Stay protected. And now we can really blast him.
Four, but never, right? Or bad, probably not too often.
Just, I would go something small, go something small to entice bluffs, maybe, I don't know. This is a weird.
A third time.
This is a weird one.
Two or three.
He probably would have bet a ten already and we block the other like good stuff mostly.
Yeah, that's what I was kinda thinking. That's why I was thinking maybe target a bluff. I don't know.
Got paid by a three.
Is a ten deuce too good just to fold?
I'm folding this.
I say limp on that one.
That's what I would do. Um, you might limp jam this.
Limb jam.
Maybe.
Limp fold.
Way out of line for me.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a thing, I don't think. No, it's in there. No, it's not.
It's probably gonna be the kings.
The king two, yeah.
If you go, if, if you go a smidge deeper, the queens start edging in. Sometimes.
Deeper. Or shallow.
It may be, it may be shallower. There's definitely ranges I've seen queen deuce. You're not gonna do it.
Twelve.
May, maybe it's shallower.
Fourteen.
It's shallower. I had it backwards. There you go.
Twelve, ten.
Very short stuff.
Yeah, once you no longer have the kings, cuz they just open jam themselves.
Yeah.
This is the whole game.
That's, that's how you, that's how you remember that.
We call this guy?
I think you probably just fold.
Never, right? We call with queen eight.
Queen eight.
I think sometimes a bit more generous in the queens.
It is, yeah. Alright, so this, alright, we gotta think about this for a second.
Yeah. Is it either?
Twenty-five big blinds.
Or a raise.
Yeah, so like that, that's it. Do you wanna put this in like the facing ISO range or do you wanna put it in the raising range? And I think maybe at twenty-five, we're just playing raise with it.
Yeah, you might have some raise, some limp jams here.
We're just raising a lot this portion.
It's more linear, right? Like, look at this. There you go. With the, the suited ones. Now, if you go down to twenty, I think you start playing limp with the top of your suited ones a little more. See, it's starting to creep in.
Think so. I think this portion is gonna almost.
You see it's starting to creep in. You see green, you're not colorblind. There it goes. Now it's starting to polarize a little bit and see like the eight through five starts to prioritize raising while the start limping. Heuristically. At twenty, obviously you can, it's still preferring to raise.
Okay, nice.
And if we raise at twenty-five and he makes it eight here?
I think you might just put it in. I don't know. You calling or putting it in?
Yeah.
I think you probably call. I think you probably call because you're isolating yourself against his value. And folding his bluffs. Like you want him, if he raises you with ace seven off or something. No, it's still, I mean, it's in there. It's either way, it's kinda whatever.
Yeah. Twenty-five big ones is just pretty resilient as a hand.
Um, we played raise, he played call. You know, I'm kind of like leaning Peter's way of thinking with this, um, jack eight two tone that we don't have the suits covered. Feels like better for caller range than our raising range, so I would probably play check here a lot. Although the ten, I think is relevant. It's a relevant blocker, so that might be like evidence for betting. It may not be good enough, right? Like you might play check more with ace queen, ace king.
Yeah, but we're supposed to see better lot here and then he calls with worse aces, does he not? I think it's a bit.
Maybe so.
Forty-five percent. But maybe like I would venture into two, calls that with worst aces very often though.
So there's a lot checking, but there is a lot of betting and it's actually really small. Because our racing strategy pre flop is more polarized, right? Like we don't have a lot of this region in there, do we?
I think we kinda do. Jack and the eight will do.
Yeah, just take a peek.
What, what jacks is he pushing back with us?
Jack seven off, jack eight off, jack six off, jack five off.
Small blind raise.
And we have some king jack suited and.
So we are, this band, it is in that band.
Yeah.
Um, the suited ones even, the suited ones are kinda not really in there, but.
But this here and then.
We do have some.
Even look at the polar ones, they kinda have interaction here, right?
We have some flush draws with some interaction. What about his call range just before we go? So he is well represented in this range with the suited ones. So it's like, I think the flush draw is better for him.
Yeah.
By a, a good margin. Okay. So that's small. I think that's a bad, bad card. I think we're gonna play check now. I wouldn't be surprised if we're starting to fold some ace six here. Um, this one might be too good though.
I would fold here.
Yeah.
Watch completing is just the death of us.
Yeah, it's really not good, right, Pete? Um, okay, so this is like probably one of the best jams. Um, it might still protect the limp range, right?
No, no, no. I think this, you know what? This is too good. We can limp and then jump.
It's somewhere between ace, jack, which I'm pretty confident is a full frequency limp here. And ace nine, which I think is a full frequency jam.
Same thing, the four combos here.
Yeah, so ace, jack is limping, ace ten. It's kinda like ace, jack, and then ace nine is jamming. Which makes sense, like it's that region. Plays really strong as a limp jam. So we play limp, he plays check. Um, so having the heart. I like, yeah, having the heart and the ten make me wanna see bet.
Having a spade would be even better.
Yeah, like, but, but here's the thing, this is a limp pot. We have ace high, we have showdown, we're just winning this pot. It's time to check.
Do you knock range back therapy?
No.
So let me.
It's a, it's kinda a board. It's a limp pot with a flush draw. So when you bet, you're just gonna give his flushes a really good price to continue. And there's straight draws with the seven four and with the jack seven. And when you bet, you're just gonna give all his draws a really good price and then you're kind of value owning yourself against when he flops a jack for a seven. Cause he's never folding for one chip.
So it's interesting, when we raise and then he calls, we see bet seventy-five percent of the time. But when we limp and then he checks, we check seventy percent of the time.
So this is, I, there should be a big caveat with that also, like when you bet one big blind here. Your opponent should have a raising range and should be defending very wide, like all of their four X. Like if, if you, if you're in a game playing a limp check pot and a guy's got four deuce here and he's not continuing versus one big blind. Or he's folding a gut shot, like a bottom, like let's say what would be the dummy end of it, the three, five. Let's say he's folding the three, five and things like that, or folding like I don't know, two, three of hearts. Stuff like that. Do you think it would, you'd prefer betting? Over checking?
Yeah, if he's, if he's that over folding.
Yeah, okay.
But like when we bet one, how much of his range folds? Fifteen percent, twenty percent?
In theory.
On this board, it's not easy for him to overfold. But there are other boards where I would advocate stabbing more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just gonna talk him through like the, the logic net really. I, I agree with you, Danny. Like, um, this is gonna be a much easier board to defend first. Someone who's a playing with a different range construction, but.
Yeah, like if the board's jack four, four, I think you can stab range, but like this board is just really bad and ace high wants to show it down. Wanna keep better, you wanna keep worse aces in too. Right? That are also gonna check back.
Yeah, I just feel like you run into equity realization problems playing pots out of position. Like you don't always make it to the river and they're, you're just gonna get pushed off your equity sometimes. You gotta call, right?
Yep.
See, maybe not, maybe not a call.
JK.
And see, this is, this is the other reason I kinda like barreling is, I feel like it's it's way easier to make mistakes playing from the back foot than it is just kinda barreling.
Yeah, because.
Cause I would call here, I would call here.
Yeah, playing with aggression is easy. You win the pot. Playing as the caller, you face aggression, you're in the box.
I see ace ten here and I'm like, in my mind, I'm saying, oh, I'm under repped. I've got, I've, I've got a reasonable ace high. I'm not folding.
I really thought it was a call as well, honestly.
I did too.
Yep.
Well, it's like you said, you, you probably have too many equity realization problems with no spade.
Yeah.
Yeah, like there was the problem, like he, he had queen jack. We just, we bet ace ten, we're just.
Don't click anything, don't click anything else.
Cards that improve us to a straight draw typically would improve his bets as well.
Yeah, I think so too. Alright, don't click anything else. Let them finish talking before you go clicky. Jeez, I, alright, so like, let's, let's try to guess the range.
This one, you know?
Well, we'll practice it, okay? So like, we know one of the, we know this middling offsuit ace is a jam. How do you construct the rest of your aces? Cause it's important.
The, the real question here is, do you jam queen nine offsuit?
Uh, I don't know.
I would jam it, but not queen eight. How about that?
No, it's too, it's too bad. Yeah, yeah. Queen ten, I'll jam. Queen nine, I will, uh.
You don't have queen nine in you.
Huh?
You don't have that, that queen nine in you.
To be honest, those hands become, I think. I was gonna say like, those hands are kind of interesting, but I think they just become, those are the hands that kinda come, become better raises as opposed to jams as you kind of adjust the field for ICM.
If we recover in a PKO, I'll do it. If we have forty bigs and he has seventeen and it's thirty percent field, maybe I'll do it. I'll probably still just raise though.
Queen ten.
Alright, so here's this range construction again. You're playing check call with your suited wheels. You're playing check jam with your, your suited value. And that ace king off and your limp jam, so the, the limp jam comes from your high Broadway suited aces and these offsuit kings, the trashy polar ones.
Two, three, four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The two, three, four of the world.
Is king, queen limp jam?
King, queen, I, you know, I don't know, actually, Danny. I think I would, you might play limp call with it. I don't know.
If, if king jack is jamming, I have to think that king, queen off is limp jamming.
It's worth a, it's worth a gander cuz I don't know.
Let's take a peek at when he raises, that's Louis after we limp.
That would make sense to me, Peter. King jack's the line and then king ten would limp call.
So we call, they raise. Yeah, yeah, you're right, Pete. So it's, if you're gonna limp jam the polar ones. You gotta protect it with a value one and king, queen off is, and king jack off are the value to protect the king four, king three, king deuce off.
Yep.
Very, so then, that makes sense. Otherwise, you're just gonna be bluffing too much.
All very logical.
Doesn't matter if when you get scammed. Uh, this reason, this region raises some, I think this, this is like towards the bottom of the boomerang, right?
Yep, yeah, this is a fine race.
So like seven, five would be better than seven, four, but yeah, it functions as a limp call for sure.
And limp give up.
See, I would bet here. He's gonna be raising like a lot of his ace six and stuff, so. I, I'm just like, I, I'm like, uh, I'm betting here. I'm betting one big one.
He's gonna have so many auto continues. And you're generating almost no fold equity with that tiny bet.
He's just gonna have so many auto folds in an ace high board because he just isn't as protected.
Alright, let's, let's check it out.
Out of position, we're not gonna bluff this hand, I don't believe.
Maybe not, maybe I'm out of line.
I think Pete's right. We don't get the necessary fold equity and then, uh, we don't have any equity. You need some equity to, to go for it here.
Yeah, ten, ten, well, ten, four off is a pair. Eight, five off seems to feel differently.
Which one? Eight, five?
Eight, five.
It, having an eight that's directly connected to the ten, nine leads you to a lot more turns that you can barrel than having a seven, which requires a gut shot to even have a barrel.
Alright, alright, five, four, seven, five.
Five, four.
Those are all suited.
No, they were all suited.
They have wheel. Wheel potential.
Oh, they do have.
It's like front door and back door that I wanna play here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know, I'm saying, I'm looking at the offsuit stuff, like, so I'm looking at the seven, six, which is a gutty. The seven, five is just an air ball.
It should be spades.
But it, it is spades. You do need some kind of interaction.
Yeah, probably with spade and the heart. Right? Blocking both backdoor, front and backdoor continues.
The risk reward in my mind for a hand like this in game is just too good. Like I would risk one big blind to take down the pot here all day.
Alright, would you risk three and a half or is this just to give up?
Uh, give up. It's a game, man. The jig is up, the jig is up. I'm folding. Uh, what do we do here? I think you can raise this two point five or do you just jam it? You might just jam this.
Yeah.
All answers, all answers seem to be reasonable. Jack ten, you see what that guy's doing? Uh, offsuit ten X. Tempted to just.
Yeah, jam.
Kinda going the other way. So this is one of those hands, like when you start ICM adjusting the field, it's gonna perform way better. It's like a two, two point five X.
Yeah.
Need thing you have to check.
No, no, no.
Bluff a bit the, the pot.
Oh, bet one.
Bet one, alright.
We got a pair.
Oh, man, if you catch a, you check, you catch him on the turn.
Uh, okay, do we jam?
Oh, no.
Or do you call?
Just call.
Yeah, just to call.
Yeah, keep it as, hit the bottom of his range and the top of his range, right? Or else damn, you only play against the top of his range.
We don't have the ace or the low kings only.
Nice. Check. Uh, you have some, some.
Okay, yeah.
Tensions here.
Yep, check to the range, check to the reason.
Look at this stonking.
No.
So this is, okay, so this is some of the stuff that I, okay, like. This donking stuff is pretty interesting. I was shown some of this also. So like, when you're facing a limp from the big blind. Your raising strategy is really polar. It's, it's condensed around like absolute garbage donkey cards that you're just gonna fold if you. Get played back at, and like your value portions. You don't do a lot of raising from these middling ranges, so like. The heuristic, like, when you're facing an open from the big blind is the low boards you can donk. The heuristic from the small blind facing an ISO is the middling boards you can donk because they are underrepresented on these middling. Connected boards. I think like, if you make it more connected, I think you actually just have some donk jams at seventeen, which is pretty wild.
That's crazy. I feel like big blind has a decent amount of these two pairs.
Well, in theory, in theory, he shouldn't, but in actuality, I think they do.
Can we look at the reports for the dog bets? There is no report for, for this scenario.
Yeah, there is.
Can you go to the ranges?
Oh, we just looked, and it wasn't, uh, okay, so limp raise, there is one. But him check, there isn't.
No. Click the all-in button, the all-in dropdown. Uh, what'd you do?
I click the all-in button?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, alright. Uh, you see where it says all-in two forty-three, seventeen, like in the column? Click that. And that should bring down like the flop textures where it kind of happens the most. It's not gonna happen on this texture. I think it needs to be more connected for like the, the crazy stuff. Okay, here you go.
Ah.
Um, so it's actually like even on some of these like lower middling ones, cause I don't think like he's gonna have seven, eight, but we do. Um. So like seven, six, four. Cause we're playing check.
All that sometimes.
It's even more of a thing as you get smaller, so if you look at the seven big blind, you're gonna see like a better representative portion of the range. See, this is what I was thinking about, was like these eight, nine, ten, seven, eight, five, five, six, eight.
Then you're thinking about a seventy-five percent bet.
Well, so those are the jack highs, so like hit this seven, hit the pot size real quick. Uh.
Not really used.
You're not really there.
It's really the biggest size you really kind of use. Or the texture you were thinking about. Cause, uh, this is what you were thinking about, right? Or was it?
Did you?
Queen ten X.
I'm just saying like these middling condensed boards, like these middling boards is where you see some of this donking behavior at this stacked up. It happens a lot at seventeen and twenty, and I think fifteen.
Happens here as well, just seventy-five percent.
So there was nothing at, uh, there was nothing at seven? I didn't, did you have it?
No, nothing at seven.
Will you just click it at the top one time? Wow, so it just really doesn't use that sizing, or click it one more time? It's weird. So why would it use all ends and, and seventy-fives but not pots? I guess it's an SPR thing. Seems kinda strange.
Seems strange, and it picks these low straight boards that I thought would favor the big blind a lot.
So check the big blind range, like, just fact check what I was saying, so I'm not like just shooting shit here. Like, if you go to the big blind range. Um. What is he raising? So this is his raising room.
Polar.
Right, so he's really, he doesn't have a ton of like straights stuff in the middle.
Yeah, he lacks the connectivity, right? So on the three straights stuff.
Yeah.
Kinda go ham.
You can, you can be quite disrespectful. If someone's raising. A polar strategy correctly, there's another big caveat to that in game that I'd be very careful using the strategy with. Is that they don't raise polar. They raise linear. So, if you do that, you might get shown a straight sometimes.
Yeah.
Track three.
What limp here?
Yeah, this is a good one.
Bet one.
I like betting, I like betting with my second pair.
Yeah, this board, we gotta go bigger.
Or check. This one, it's two.
I think you might even go bigger than two.
Check seems good, try to get to showdown.
Nah, you're right, you're right, check's good. You got, you got a pair, so why are you, we don't need to bet.
We got downgraded. Maybe a little block that now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a little, little blocky boy.
Put a little blocky boy out there.
Alright, alright, hey, you guys got hands you want to review, marked hands?
Hmm. I think I've marked a couple, if you wanna look at some hands.
Yeah, for sure, cause I, I think it's important to make a point to review hands.
I agree. Are we sending to you? Is that what we're doing?